Where's my agendas? Two bad meals pulled up.
Oh, look at you. I printed them. I don't know where they are.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, not here.
Probably on my desk somewhere. And there's a nomination paper in the signature file, so we can do that during the roundtable.
Okay. All right, seeing that's five o'clock, would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Thanks for coming in. Start out the meeting. We'll be discussing secondary driveway and then go into non- pub- or roundtable discussion, not non-public so quick. Hopefully. So with that, did I say Mitch and Kim with us?
Yes, yes, and since you get to hear Mitch talk all the time, I'm talking tonight.
That's right.
Nice.
I like it.
All right.
Give him a break.
So you know Mitch, I'm Kim Black, and we bought Nineteen Page Hill Road in August of 2019. And I gave you a packet that shows a couple diagrams of the property, the front lot, or lots. And when we moved into the property, there were three entrances to our property. And today, there are still three entrances to our property. It was reported soon after we had the driveway paved that someone came in and said, hey, they added a driveway. And we did not add a driveway. We did not create a new driveway. The three entrances have existed since before we purchased the property. Not that that matters, because we know there's no grandfathering clause in the zoning regulation. However, no additional driveway was created. We use all three entrances on a regular basis. The paving project just brought to somebody's attention, oh, there is that south entrance to our property, which has probably been there for a couple hundred years. Going way back, as early as 1818, there's a recorded deed that talks about giving Ebenezer Fletcher access to the property to cross the property in order to get to his mill on the pond there, the Taylor Pond. He lived just across the road from us and a little bit to the south. So we're speculating that that entrance was probably created for him to walk across there. He was probably getting to be elderly at that point. His son owned our property. And then that would have continued until he died. The driveway that's to the north of our house, and you see a little straight object there, I believe that has to do with a 1948 deed that spoke to two neighbors sharing a dug well with the owners of our property. And it allowed them to enter the premises and do maintenance and repairs as needed. They shared that water. And that's back to 1948. So we can speculate that the three entrances that are there have been there for a very long time. We know that there's not a grandfathering clause for the zoning regulations, but we're hoping that the boards will say, hey, you're good to go. Get back to your lives.
Okay. Thank you.
I did have Peter go check it to make sure it meets all of our driveway criteria as far as sightlines and all that, and he said everything's fine.
Okay. All right, so you didn't have to remove the stone wall or anything like that?
No, the, I took pictures there. I showed the stones that are at the end of the stone walls on each side of the opening, and there's lichen and moss on those stones, just like the rest of the stones. So that's been like that for, I'm guessing, a very, very long time.
Is that dug well, still a shared well?
It's not in the more recent deeds, but in 1948, it did talk about one of the neighbors and heirs or assigns. So whether that means for eternity, who knows, but it's not a, it's just a simple little, like fifteen-foot-deep well that's maybe this big around.
So it's not actively used for?
No, and back in the day, I'm sure people were a lot more conscious about their water use, but that wouldn't even support our household today. Yeah, there's some water in there, but who knows if it's safe or if it's full of bacteria or what.
One of the residents in the village reminded, informed us, although we knew about it, when his well ran dry a couple summers ago during the drought, I think he had left his hose on by mistake in his well. So he came over and reminded us that that was a community well, a shared well, but he never needed it.
It only holds about four hundred gallons, I think, yeah.
You all look familiar, so I apologize if I don't remember your names, but did you come in to discuss this or?
Oh, yeah, we're just, yeah, we're new to the area or fairly new. We moved down directly next door to Kim and Mitch about three years ago.
And they're putting in a driveway.
No, we're paving it.
What house number is that?
You already called it part two, so I'm gonna get that worked.
Yeah, but we are, we're absolutely in support of it. It just makes sense. And it's a lot safer to have that secondary exit as well. This way, they're not having to back onto Page Hill, which we all know can sometimes be a little speeder.
With the sixty mile per hour traffic, yes, that can be difficult. Plus, we're a multi-generational household. We have four vehicles. And so not having to juggle and try to back out of one driveway is, that's just insane. People come flying up and down the road there.
So do you see any of the exceptions that we could use with the current driveway regulations?
Because it talks about a new driveway, and we didn't create a new driveway. So it seems like it doesn't apply.
I, I agree with you. However, the regulations that were adopted don't read that way.
And then the form that is an application for something, for an approval or something, doesn't even have in the form anything that mentions our type of scenario or half the residents in New Ipswich that have multiple driveways.
This is, this is why I bring this up, because, and I don't know, for the past six months or so, I've become more and more aware of it, and on this board, we're tasked. We're demanded by the state to enforce these regulations. I don't like it. This no-grandfathering thing is leading us to exactly what you just said. Almost half the driveways in New Ipswich.
Right, so are we going to haul in half the residents to work out?
Show me where I have authority to not.
Oh.
I feel like number four applies.
Number four is kind of wide open.
Yeah.
In the package, I highlighted, I highlighted areas that were of interest.
Can you read number four?
Where a horseshoe driveway is proposed and approved by the selectmen or they're designee a second driveway entrance is permitted.
Pretty vague.
Well, it is kind of a horseshoe. It's more like a lawn.
Yeah, it's a wide stance horse.
Yeah. You can land a plane on purpose, but yes.
But the other, but that one there allows the selectmen to, but are the first three giving the selectmen the parameters as to when it can be permitted?
It can be for any of those reasons.
Now, section four, number, at the end of paragraph or item two, it also states, no permit shall be required when paving an existing driveway and no substantial change is proposed, and that's exactly what happened.
Let's see, we had this come to us a few months ago, and that was said.
For a different property?
Doesn't matter if no changes were proposed, horseshoe driveways are illegal in town. Whether they've been there since seventeen hundreds, or you're making one now, or if you're restoring one, none of that matters.
Unless it's approved by the selectmen.
Where in the regulations does it say that?
No, it does. That's, that's.
If I could just, so that was, that's just a part of the conversation that we had. And then not the reason why we ended up going in the direction that we did, because we could grant that access, but that had other issues with it.
That one in particular.
Yeah, so you're telling one piece, and that wasn't what was enforced, like enforceable like that section.
We didn't act on that portion of that particular case.
Yeah.
However, this is the second time. I mean, probably by law, we should have. And by law, I don't.
So.
I think it's, I think it's terrible that, because nobody knows this. And you didn't know. I know Mitch well enough to know that if he knew, he would have been here long before, but he didn't, and people don't know, and I don't like it. And I bring this up not to propose making you rip out your driveway, but to say, people.
Cause that's gonna happen.
What are you asking? Now, if this board is friendly to people who are in your situation, that's good for the people in your situation. This board changes on a regular basis. And if it turns out it's not friendly, then yes, I believe the board has authority to say, you're only allowed one.
So can you point to where in the regulations it says horseshoe?
What second entrance?
Driveways? But we have three entrances.
That's even more, and that's where I said, this is a really interesting conversation. And I think it has to be had, because when we brought it up at the other case, and a member of the planning board was there, and they said, well, it's really written not to go out and enforce it to everybody. But you can't do that, can you? It's only there if somebody comes in, as happened with you, and says, hey, how come they have two entrances? Now, it's put to us. We either enforce, or we grant an exemption. If we, if we grant an exception to you, what about the other guy? And you can say, hey, it's gonna be case by case. Again, half the driveways in New Ipswich.
Now, if we were creating a new configuration that resulted in a horseshoe, there, I think there could be a conversation about that, because it references new driveways. But if you have something that's been in place for centuries, you know?
I agree.
And there have to be other people in town that also have situations like ours.
There is. I counted one time.
What are we going to do, ask everybody to rip their driveways out?
I counted one time, driving to here from my house is like, I can't remember what it was, thirteen, fifteen?
Especially if any of the properties were former farm properties. There's going to have more than one entrance.
So the state driveway regs say where entrances to state highways have been constructed after July seventy-one. Oh, that's after. Could, shall be considered non-conforming. But I, I was trying to look really quick to find where the state no-grandfathering.
Unless it's a state highway, it's not the local.
But the state, this, you can, in your town regs, you can be more restrictive than the state regs, but you can't be less restrictive.
And the problem here too is we have so many historic properties that were, came about in the seventeen hundreds and early eighteen hundreds. That's just putting those homeowners in a bind then.
Right, so, and we, when we were doing the driveway regs, Luke can vouch for that, because it took us like a year to do it, is when I was the land use admin. And there was a big thing about the grandfathering part of it, you know, like that, because the state says there's no grandfathering when it comes to driveways. So basically, the end of the conversation was, we're not, there's no way anybody could possibly go through town and say, hey, you need, you need to get a driveway, you need to come before the select board, whatever.
You need to get rid of that driveway.
Unless you hear a complaint from someone, just like the zoning ordinance. We don't know who's running a business out of their house and who's not, unless we get a complaint about it. So it was basically the end of the conversation, like I said, was if someone complains about it, we bring it to their, to the homeowner's attention, they come before the select board, they, the select board makes sure it conforms with the town driveway regs and says, okay, we're gonna grant you a driveway permit. And so all you have to do is fill out the paperwork, because it's already, we already had Pete go out and walk, and it meets all the, everything that it needs to meet, the site distances for safety and all that kind of stuff, so.
Well, then you also would have to adapt your application form, because there's nothing on that form that addresses a situation like ours and any other people.
So we, I mean, we could put a note on it.
But there is no, there's no need for a permit to pave their driveway.
Right.
But, but you're, you're given permission to create, create a driveway.
That gives you the number four.
Right.
That's another conundrum is that the, because it's been brought to your attention and the board has to respond to it, to request an application for a permit when a permit is not needed to begin with, is, doesn't follow logically either. Jason, I want to respond to something you said. I appreciate your being concerned about, you know, board members' change, or what happens if, you know, down the road, the board says something different from what this board decides. That's always the case. I mean, you all make a lot of decisions, and there's no guarantee that a subsequent board will make the same decisions that you're making regardless of what it's about. You could make the decision that we have to do an application or whatever process, and then the next board says, no, we're not gonna require that. So you can't make your decisions based on what you think future boards are gonna do. You have to make a decision based on what you think is right at this moment.
And I absolutely agree, and I will go by that. My point in bringing that up is that's the weakness of this.
Well, there's a weakness in every regulation. We can only do the best we can do.
There's a weakness in every level of government. For the same reason.
On this board?
For the same reason.
Wait a second.
Wait a minute.
This is one of the strongest levels of government.
Yeah, there we go. No, but, and you know, if I wasn't put in the position of enforcing this, I would never even think about it.
Right.
But when I look at it, and, and I know Sean said the previous case that we, that it came up in, we didn't include that in our verbiage of a stop work order. However, it was discussed at length. That person will find out about this ruling. Even though we didn't make a ruling, it was made known that was part of the complaint.
Well, it is.
However.
However.
Wetlands, all of that.
Yeah, there was a little bit of that. There was a little bit of the stone wall being involved and some stuff. But the catch there was that, um, there was an argument with that one that one, that one driveway was never a driveway. It was just an area that when either the house or the barn was being built, that it was being used as a staging area for the material.
Right, and, and the whole thing is with our regulations, that doesn't matter. It doesn't matter that their driveway was there for since seventeen ninety, or if these folks put in a driveway yesterday. It's the same rules supposed to apply to both of them.
Agreed. However, it wasn't, there are a number of people that said that was never a driveway.
Okay, but this is.
Yeah, but I don't want to get too far down that, because that's its own whole thing.
Right.
And from this point forward, I wish that's not brought up again, because it's, this is a different case than that completely.
Right.
And doesn't have many of the elements that that, that case has. Like this is, it's wholly different in my eyes.
And that's why it's on a case-by-case basis.
Except for the fact that it's a horseshoe shape.
That there's, that's your eyes.
Yeah.
And obviously, you see by me bringing it up, it's not totally different in my eyes. And I think next week, we could have another totally different, and another one.
Yeah.
And another one, and another one. And my whole point in bringing it all up is this regulation is onerous.
Oh, this regulation is pretty clear. Item number one. Hereafter, no driveway shall be constructed without compliance with this regulation. And since that ruling went into effect, it was adopted on March third, twenty twenty-one. All right, that's item number one. Item number two. As Kim noted, we're talking about substantial change. However, it's listed here that no permit shall be required when paving an existing driveway and no substantial change is proposed.
Except for the fact, this is a second entrance, a horseshoe driveway. With that, with the vice chair, the planning board that came into the meeting, Josh Mahonan, I didn't know if you'd come in for this subject specifically.
Yeah.
And if you wanted to weigh in.
I don't have a lot of experience, but I've read the regulation a few times just to, just to try to, try to get a little bit more familiar with it. I guess I'm not, I'm interested to see where, where, what the decision is here. And I think my, the way Lou's reading it as far as from that point forward, is that, is that saying that as a horseshoe driveway that's been previously constructed, is that, is that meaning that the horseshoe driveway that's been previously constructed is not necessarily grandfathered in, but doesn't fall under that regulation? Or, or now, there's a few things in there that you say, is this going forward, from that time forward, these are, these, you know, driveways need to be constructed under these regulations. Prior to, obviously, there's no sense of grandfathering, but at the same time, that reads the way.
Right.
It reads as if there is grandfathering.
So, so I would like to see the law, because I've heard it over and over again. There's no grandfather. I'd like to see that.
I was trying to find it, but I didn't have time today.
Cause I don't see it in here.
It's not in our driveway regs. It is not in the town driveway regs, but it's in the state.
So for me, the grandfathering aspect is moot, like in this case specifically. The way that I look at it, whether, whether, whether or not, whether or whether or not it was there, we have no permit on file for a second entrance to your property. And I completely understand, like, that aspect of not wanting to obtain the permit. But I also do see in our regulations, the ability for the select board to allow a second driveway. And that item number four, under section B, or so section seven, B, four, when you read that paragraph through paragraph B, it said, a second driveway may be granted for the following conditions. So it's not, so it goes one, two, three, and then number four, where a horseshoe driveway is proposed and approved by a selectman or they're designee, a second driveway entrance is permitted. So that is one of the reasons to grant permission for that driveway. And that's just like where my mind's at on this whole thing.
It is, and where my mind is at is why are these people having to come here and ask us permission? That's where my whole mind is at.
They may be seeking clarification.
Well, no, not at this point.
They're seeking permission.
They're seeking permission.
Permission in terms with the permit.
Right, but it has to be approved by the select board before they can get a permit.
Right.
So as cumbersome as it sounds to have to do this case by case, because not everybody that buys a property is gonna wanna utilize that other dirt entrance that's been there for time. They may even just close it off and complete the rock wall, because everybody has different uses of their properties that they'd like to see. It's just, it is the best way, and if other people, you know, before they pave their driveways and even think about paving a second access, they should come down and see if they need a permit, like to get that opinion.
Because why? And that's my whole point. I just think it just is adding another layer to people's lives. Look at this couple here. How many hours spent putting this together? How many hours coming down presenting, now that we're gonna ask them to go fill out more paperwork? We grant, I, I understand, we don't have authority to change this.
Exactly. Like, we have to enforce our regulations and.
You're looking for the second entrance to be the ones that are labeled here, number one and number two. This does not include anything about?
Number three.
Number three.
No.
Okay, so at, when you're looking at the deeds and all of that, did they say anything about the, the?
The third driveway?
The existence of driveway number one and number two?
There's nothing specifically identifying our driveways. And that's why, well, I had already researched the property going back to the early eighteen hundreds. I went back into those deeds in the language that I mentioned earlier about people having ingress and egress, and how long ago it was in that they were probably using those particular driveways. But it's a speculation. It's logical. But we just have no way of knowing, you know, how long have they been there?
Okay.
And if it even matters.
Right.
We know the, the family that we bought the house had lived there for about forty years, and they were using both driveways, you know, routinely, so.
And you said you use all three routinely?
Well, wood, if we get firewood, they'll back into that third driveway is just.
People that deliver the oil come into that third driveway.
Or they can deliver oil there. They'll just, it's like thirty feet.
But we have no plans to.
Ends at that dug well.
Yeah.
It's not anything very formal, really. The grass is growing up on parts of it. But you can tell it was well-used, because there are tracks that they're not gonna grow anything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's basically like gravel. It's basically like gravel.
Yeah, somebody probably at a later date added some gravel or something that would harden on that third. Uh, and it's just a very narrow between the house and the woodshed.
We could remove the stone wall between the two driveways and just have one big driveway.
I don't think the driveway reg would let you, cause there's a limit on your entrance. This is.
No, not even that, there's there's a state thing about you removing rock walls.
You can't destroy walls.
You can't destroy rock walls.
Yeah.
Wow.
And if you destroy one, it can only be temporary, you have to put it back.
Right.
Access point.
I just feel like this, like that, like tying up all the other conversations and as. You know, difficult is to swallow some of these, the driveway regulations. To further impose that on these people that have come before us this evening. To me, it's a different discussion for a different night with a different group of people.
Possibly.
Planning board.
So we've had these discussions, um, they're all in the ethereal. They're figments of imagination, today we have a face to the problem, or what I see as a problem.
Yeah.
So, that's why I had burned up all this time before. And I apologize if you see it as burning up time, but I don't like.
No, no, we just want resolution.
We don't mind, we don't mind because I agree with you, this has potential impact for a lot of people in this community.
Does.
Over time.
That would be unfortunate.
Sure.
So, in the zoning ordinances, there's a paragraph in there for nonconforming pre-existing uses, article thirteen. Says, all nonconforming properties in active use when the ordinance is adopted, they continue in their present use period.
Yeah, we just had it the other week.
Yeah, and you know, the issue that we were talking about before had not been used, I'll say ever, but in a lot more than two years. The next one says, uh, if it's used or discontinued or abandoned for two years. It shall therefore conform to the regulations for the district and any subsequent use shall be considered as a special exception. So basically, I I believe the, the um, grand, the lack of grandfathering. Uh, applies if it's not used within a two year period based on the zoning ordinances.
But this isn't a zoning ordinance though.
Correct, well driveways aren't structured and that's covered by the zoning ordinance.
But they have their own regs and the state has their own regs for that. I get what you're saying.
So my interpretation is, it's 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 in, it has been used, it is in use, and they can continue in their present use. Based on the zoning ordinance.
And and we've had other opinions on that, however. Be that as it may, I make a motion that we accept or grant permission. For Mitch Gluck and Kim Black to add three entrances to their properties in Smithville.
For three, huh?
That's what they're asking.
Well, the other one, you've got the, um, you have fuel well in the house.
Mm-hmm.
And there's that third entrance where the pipe does, standpipe is.
Where it goes into the house.
It doesn't, that entrance, that third driveway does not give access to enter the house per se. There's a basement door there, but it's used strictly for.
Comes out from the tank.
Where the wood is is dropped off and where the oil is.
Yeah.
Okay, and um, question is, how far would that pipe be from?
From the road?
For where the road is.
Um, it's about thirty feet, I would imagine, and they they can run the hose, yes, yes.
Whether it, that driveway is used for that or not.
And if there's a big snowbank, they're not driving into there anyway, they'll just walk over the bank with the hose.
Okay, so it's, you know, you've got an area there that's present, but it.
It's not being used as a driveway.
Really not being used unless it's.
Right, and I moved that they have three entrances to their property, that's what my motion, I believe I said.
Okay, no, I was just looking for clarification.
Yeah.
Could the oil be delivered from the road? And.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but I'm saying I didn't say driveways.
Okay.
Alright, so is there a second?
What do we, what do we second?
You made a motion to, um, give.
Grant permission.
To have three entrances.
To have three entrances to their property.
Okay, so I'll second that.
Alright, so for a point of discussion. This case, like they don't utilize the third uh area for an entrance.
So we do ourselves, we will go back in there with a vehicle.
Yeah.
Like if we wanna access the north side at the back of the property, we'll go in there.
So, and if. To me, it's a bit different because the the pavement aspect where that's not improved. Um, where there's the two driveway cuts, like for the specific point of people coming and going. Um, safely, not having to back out onto the road, um, those points that you had made earlier. And I'm just, I'm not sure. If we could even grant a third um driveway, cause at that point it would be a driveway.
Why wouldn't we be able to?
Cause it doesn't say as many um driveways as the selectman wants, it's a second driveway.
When does a driveway become a path?
But here's the thing. A horseshoe driveway is considered one. They'd be, they'd have two driveways, it's just that one would be a horseshoe driveway.
It's two entrances.
Then you'd have three entrances.
Yeah, and so that other one, you know, that could just brought up, I mean, basically, that one's not.
The third entrance, you know, just to be real clear, if if we come in on that. If if we come in on the third entrance, it's for the purpose of hauling stuff to the back of the field. It's not where the public would come in at all.
Well, and I'd like to say, I live, I drive by your house multiple times a day.
And you don't know it exists.
Never had an issue with that third entrance. And I'd like to see you be able to continue to use it at your pleasure. But I don't know if I'm legally able to.
Well, I think they can still use it, cause it's a path and it's infrequent, it's not like it's parked there and.
And that's a structure.
It may be gravel, I don't know if it's still gravel.
There's two strips of gravel, I see.
There's, there's two little tracks or something.
Yep, you have to put loam there and plant it.
We could, we could remove those three stones tomorrow.
Yeah, that's, you know, like, you know, as I'm not opposed to um, the second entrance. You know, for the horseshoe driveway, um, I am opposed to, you know, granting three points of access. Um, without clarification, so that's just my comment before we vote.
Would you like to see, cause I'd be open to amending that.
Yeah, what are you accessing with that?
I don't know that there's a necessity um to even grant any type of. Access for that third spot being that. There's nothing impeding them going into their property at that point, you know, it'd be a different conversation. If it was, you know, a paved driveway to access a backlot, say, then we're getting into other things, but you see.
I don't believe legally, I think, if they're using it, they're using it, and it's an access point. It's an entrance off of a road, we can say it's just a convenience entrance, well. What does the next guy say? I don't, I don't think that there's much, I mean, I guess we can tell them to gate it off.
There's not a look to gate off, I didn't even realize that there's a third, it mustn't be that noticeable that it's there.
If it's not, how do you enforce them not putting an oil truck in there?
Okay, let me throw this at at you. You've got the, we're we're all in place for the horseshoe driveway, right? The third one could easily be um, a pass that was used for logging in the past.
It was access to the well, basically.
Or access to the well, and if, I have no idea what the law states about heirs and assigns. If one of my neighbors shows up and says, hey, I'm an heir of da-da-da, I want access to your well, your dug well. Then how are they gonna get to it, the, that little driveway goes right up, there's the well.
So is it, I mean, could it be considered an access point versus a driveway? I mean, I know a driveway. Yeah, not even, well, they have any, there's an easement for the other um, people to use that strip there.
Yeah.
So it's already an easement.
There also used to be a fourth open road along our north boundary that went directly back to the well. But now it's just a line of mature pine trees, so that property has had.
Yeah.
All kinds of iterations.
It's not really considered a, um, a driveway.
So, keep using it, um, we're just gonna call it nothing.
Driveway.
Yes, so is, what exactly, you're just asking for the two entrances, you don't care about the third one?
In the language for the well area. Um, it said, property owners could enter the premises for the purpose of laying, maintaining, and replacing pipes, et cetera. It doesn't say there's a driveway there.
Right, it's just an access point.
Um, that area.
An access easement.
Yeah, the power line company.
Right.
So what would be the harm in having three driveways?
They don't want it?
They came in for two, and you wanna give them like more than what they're looking for? Yeah.
No, it says right here, three driveways have existed, they didn't just come in for two. I think they've been clear that they use.
We just wanted to clarify.
The third one, um, I suppose if we tell them they can't anymore, I don't see this couple as being overly rebellious.
You're not gonna say they can't.
We're not gonna say we, they can't, there's an easement to gain access to a well. I know you think, like, this is all, like, I get it, like, I'd like to do this all night, like, go back and forth, like, with this.
I wouldn't.
But it's, it's pretty, like, it just seems clear, cut, and simple with the two. Um, where our authority lies, and to go overboard with it could actually cause more issues going forward. Potentially.
I agree.
Yeah.
But I'm not afraid.
Okay.
Every case is its own case.
Alright, so, is there any further comment on Jason's motion for three access points? All those in favor?
No, I mean.
Three entrances.
Yeah, three entrances.
Oh, okay, great, yeah, I thought you you wanted to have, were you two coming into a balance between calling it. Two access points plus an easement?
If that makes you feel more comfortable, I'm open to an amendment.
I don't care where, but the thing's been there.
Get an access.
They already have easements in place, but there's no, nobody has to grant anything.
I thought you said it wasn't in place in the latest deed.
For all we know, it was in place, the ease, let's call it an easement for this argument. Has been in place since nineteen forty-eight. For that north entrance between the house and the woodshed.
Would you like to amend my motion to change it to two and easement?
I don't care where the other. I mean, I I would say that it it's a driveway, if it actually connected to the other, to the driveway also. And then it would be another third entrance. But.
Yeah, it goes, I mean, the, the, whatever we're calling it, goes for about thirty feet. And then it starts going up the grass slope, which becomes part of.
Long.
Yeah, it's, there is no road there or anything like that.
So it's an easement to the well.
Would you like to amend my motion, cause I'd be open to an amendment?
Have a friendly amendment? Uh, the under section seven, uh, B four, to grant a second driveway. Access permit for nineteen Page Hill Road for the construction of their horseshoe driveway.
The paving of the horse.
Or paving, yeah, well, construction of the horseshoe driveway encompasses the.
Well, there was no construction.
The pavement is construction and they brought material in.
Yeah, I bet the definition's here.
Yeah.
If it was construction, you'd have to get a permit, but you don't need a permit to pave.
But they need a permit for the driveway.
We're giving them.
I'm looking to give them a permit for their driveway to start.
They need to?
Yes.
Why?
Because there isn't a permit on file, and in order to not have this come back at them.
Or when they sell it or whatever, they have a legal driveway permit.
A second entrance is permitted.
I thought this was gonna take ten minutes.
You know me better than that, Debbie.
I know, I know, but that's a planning board, we, the select.
Yeah.
It's a planning board.
I would just assume grant them permission and not make them fill out paperwork, cause it's, we, that's how I read this. This regulation, we just grant them permission.
And in the future, if we're asked, or we sell the property, someone asks, we have a minute for the meeting.
That's how I would read it.
Cause they're good record keepers, what if they weren't?
But you're a good minute taker.
Thanks.
It'll be part of the town's public record.
No, I know, but if you don't know when this meeting happened, if somebody they, somebody who doesn't keep good records. Is gonna go back and try to find, or they're gonna call the town administrator or somebody to, hey, when, can you find, was this ever approved? Let's see, way back in twenty twenty.
We could waive the fees if you wanted to waive the fees.
Yeah, waive the fee, I agree with that.
But, I can, I can make the same argument with a driveway permit. If, I guess, if you guys. Actually, I don't, I don't want that in my amended article, uh, motion. I just wanna grant them permission and let them go in their merry way. Motion's on the floor.
For three driveways?
Points of access to the property.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, aye, or in favor?
In favor.
Okay. So Lou is in favor of the three access point?
I don't really care about the third one.
Should I order out?
Right?
I think it might take mine to go.
What you're gonna say, either that or just doing a breakfast.
It's been there for seventy years.
It's been there at least as long as the community well was used by the community, which is seventy years or longer.
So basically, we're not amending your original motion?
Yeah, right, I refused any amendments and said the motion's on the floor.
Okay. And it passed?
It passed.
Two to one.
What did you say?
I said, I'll do the driveway.
She said, she said she enjoyed our, she enjoyed our conversation two weeks ago.
Yes, I called in Belfast.
Yes.
I mean, we've already done this, right?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question of, of a member of the audience?
Is it related? I'm sorry, I'm not a chair.
Josh, yes, what do you think?
Getting multi.
I think, uh, I I don't have a lot of knowledge in this, but looking, listening and and uh, what I've read. I think that the select board has the ability to, to grant that second en, the second entrance. Without, what it reads, without an additional permit. Um, it just requires the, the, them agreeing to the second entrance, so. So as, as, it seems like there's not a lot of paperwork to that, it seems like that's the way it reads. They, they can just say, yep, we agree to your second entrance and, and uh, go for it. Um, I'm looking at, just look reading through it now, so I'm not, that's, cause I was a little bit like, ah, what's the, what is the, the uh. Paper trail to this, but, but the way is, there isn't anything. But, but the way is, there isn't anything that requires you to have a, a second or, or additional paperwork or additional uh permitting for this other level, it's just. This is your.
So, if I may. No, I'm talking to you.
He's the chairman.
I, I know, but I'm talking to you, you, you were the anti-permit person. I am gonna fill out a permit, then next time they're in, I'm gonna have them sign it, and I'm just gonna say, see minutes of six four twenty-four. And put it in the property file, just so there is a paper trail.
You and this couple would like to have that.
Well, no, he doesn't, he doesn't want, the permit was not a part of the motion, it was three entrances.
No, that's. I know.
Yep.
And that's it, no permits, it was specifically stated, no permit.
That's it. But that wasn't part of the motion either.
Yeah.
What these guys do with our, with their town office.
With the paperwork?
Is none of my business.
Are you okay with that?
I, it doesn't matter if I'm okay with it or not, that's between them and the town office.
If they, if they.
I don't see that.
Cuz there was no permit mentioned in the motion, so. I just, I just wanna have a paper trail for perpetuity.
You know, you can search on the website, put in luck or black, and it will take you to anything that was generated over the years for.
Alright.
Um, that's how I even found the driveway regulations, I just put driveways.
Oh, yeah.
To answer your question, Debbie?
And that's it.
And anything.
Yes.
I have no issue with.
Okay.
With what you guys want to do.
I just, I don't wanna go contrary to your motion.
Nope, it doesn't.
Okay.
I don't believe it does.
We'll chat, if you wanna do it, fine, if you don't, fine.
As long as it's not spoken about here.
Yeah, right.
How much do you have to pay the house to pass that one?
We're four plus.
Yeah.
There's three, three lots.
About, about four and a half, four and a quarter acres.
Yeah.
Okay, so that could be a driveway. It's still left in the future.
Maybe.
Well, it is now, it's a driveway now.
Yeah, well, they'd have to. They'd have to take down some trees to afford driving over the subject.
It would be.
At least go.
At least, yeah, so.
And there's a lot of wide range behind here.
Yeah.
House.
Yeah.
It's highly unlikely.
Yeah.
I think, but I've been surprised before.
Alright.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, can I get your names?
Uh, Patrick and Delia Fitzgerald.
D E L I A.
We got pulled over rushing over here.
Is that why you were late?
Yeah.
We have cops in town?
Yeah, they were packing too. We're on camera.
Did you get a warning?
Yeah. I had no problem with that, I was speeding.
Yeah.
Turned down, down from uh High Bridge. Car coming down the hill, there's plenty of room, but I kinda wanna make him slow down, so I took off from there, came over the hill, and I was going fifty, it's like, hey.
Oopsie.
Going fifty. Shoot.
Yep.
Um, so we'll get into some of our roundtable stuff here, um, Debbie, do you have anything? Have you heard back from who we offered the building inspector job to?
Oh yeah, he's already talked to, um, he went out with Gary today, so Gary could show us.
So, I was just leading into the announcement of, of Casey.
Oh, yes, I have.
Yeah.
He accepted the position.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Oh, good.
Casey Burridge, uh, will be our, um, new building inspector, inspector code enforcement officer.
See, so many things happen that I just.
Yeah.
And that will take place, it'll shift.
July first.
July first. Hopefully, we can come in and meet the town.
Yeah.
Yep. Cool.
Um, and then how's the hiring going for the part-time assessing admin, full-time planning admin, two DPW workers and two police officers? No applicants yet?
I have one application and actually came in before we even had a position available for the. Um, full-time slash part-time, and I'm not even sure if they want full or part.
For the planning board or?
We. Yeah, I don't know. It was just, it was just an application, so I don't know if it's, yeah.
Oh, you don't know? For clerk.
Actually. I don't know if it's full-time or part-time, but it's been in the paper three times now. Today, Thursday, Tuesday, yep, three times now, it's been on the website, we gave it another push on the, um, Facebook page, so. Yeah.
When was the deadlines for the, the next, oh, this Friday?
Friday. Yeah. If anybody out there wants a job, please call me. I can't do this all summer.
Uh, did you have anything else for us?
I do, um, there is a applicant, uh, recommendation from the patriotic purposes committee for, um, Hilda Barra. Um, they nominated her and like your approval.
Yeah, I think she'd be a good addition, you know Hilda?
I met her at the third.
Lou?
Yeah. Uh, I agree.
Okay.
Want me to say?
Make a motion to appoint Hilda Barra to the patriotic purposes committee?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, you all agreed.
My notes, Sean, how many positions did you just rattle off to?
Uh.
To Debbie?
One, two, four, six.
There's six open positions right now.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yep.
What's typical this time of year, is there a, is there a cycle that we typically see or something?
Kind of random.
Yeah. So each year, we seem to probably have about six of various positions open, like.
Yeah. PD and DPW seem to be the most.
Yeah, they have a.
As long as I've.
Turnover, yeah.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just had someone retire, Jen, so.
Yeah.
Can I carry on?
Yep.
For other things, okay, so I spent a little while on the phone today with Steve Spratt. From the school board. And he is very upset because they installed, um, stokers at the school. And requested money from the trustees of the trust funds, and they refused it, and it was like twenty grand. And they want the selectmen to be aware of it. And I, I explained to him that the selectmen don't have any authority over the trustees of the trust funds, they have, they have to uphold the. You know, what they need to do, you know, like how, the spirit of however that trust fund or capital reserve was created. And what they say is what they say, and they have already contacted attorneys. So, but he wanted me to make sure that I let you guys know this.
Question, what, what's it that they want money for?
Contacted.
Uh, they want money for, um, they say it falls under maintenance, uh, trustees of the trust funds is saying it does not fall under maintenance. That they're stockpiling parts or something, but it's some kind of custom part for this stoker.
You call it a stoker.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, for what?
Cuz it's for the wood pellet boiler up there.
Yeah, right.
At the school.
Oh, okay.
So, they ordered it and now the trustees will not give the money out from the capital reserve.
But the school board.
Well, they have, they, they, don't they have their own maintenance budget for the school?
Apparently, they didn't put that in there, I don't know.
Well, the trustees oversee, they oversee their trust funds as well.
Yeah.
Oh, that'll do.
Yeah, it's not town stuff, they're not asking for town, well, town budget, capital reserve money, they're asking for school capital reserve money. They have their own, the trustees of the trust funds are in charge of both.
So, if I understand, he said the school board is gonna hire an attorney to, uh, to the trustees of the trust fund?
He says basically, we have to sue ourselves, is what he said.
I guess have to is, uh.
Well, they, they don't have the twenty thousand dollars in their budget, and, you know, I kinda. Well, went off on a tangent a little bit, but, you know, I was like, well, you, do you have like a capital improvement plan, like, do you plan ahead for things like this? Or, you know, like that would be, I mean, that's what the town has to do, cuz if we need to buy a new police cruiser or a dump truck or whatever, we have to have money saved, we can't just.
So simply because the part hasn't failed yet, or parts, like, I don't know how many parts it is, or anything about this whatsoever at all, first time hearing about it.
Mm-hmm.
But it sounds like a maintenance item when the part goes bad.
So the, the, there's two different pieces to it, and they've both failed in the past year or two, and they've had to replace both of them.
Yeah.
Now they're trying to get a third one, so when these, one of these two fails again, they have it there instead of having to shut the school down or having to wait. Months and months because it's a custom-made part, it's not something you can just go take it off the shelf.
Oh.
So, the trustees are saying it's stockpiling parts, and the school begs to differ and says it's not, it's, it's a maintenance issue.
That's crazy.
Because if we don't have that, we can't wait months for this, for them to make this part.
Yeah.
So, but, and, you know, like I said, I, I told him that, you know, the selectmen really can't tell us the trustees of the trust funds what to do or how to do their thing.
It's true, but, but if they're.
But I would mention it, but I told him I would mention it to you guys.
Yeah, and it does involve us if they're going to hire an attorney to come after.
The trustees.
The town in the whip switch.
Well, they're not gonna come after the town in the whip switch.
Who would need a.
It's the, he, the way he said it was, we basically have to sue ourselves. Which is, sounds stupid, because it's his tr, right, they're his trust, they're school trustees as well as town trustees.
Because it's his. His trustees too.
So, they're gonna school, sue the school trustees to get that money. Probably spend forty grand to get twenty.
This is what I'm, I guess, that's why I say you have to, I guess.
Well, it's.
I don't know if I would look at it as have to, but that's not my thing, that's the school.
That's, they, he has been directed by the school board to contact the attorney, which he already has.
Yeah.
And he was told that the selectmen didn't know anything about it, and I said, well, they can't do anything about it, but I'll let them know.
Yeah, it's two separate entities, school board and trustees of the trust.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, are there, are there two sets of trustees here?
Right. No.
Because part of the school is Greenville.
No, the trustees of the trust funds. That we have for our town capital reserve and trust funds are the same trustees of the trust funds for the school. So we have, it's the same group of three people that they are in charge of the wards of the two separate entities, the school and the town.
Okay. So, does some of the money that comes in, um, into the trust fund for the school come from the Greenville tax base?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's all in.
I don't need any more information than that.
The school trust fund.
I understand that, I don't need any more information.
Capital reserve. Capital reserve.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't all new whip switch money.
It's not just. New whip switch, no, it's, it's school district, it's school money.
Okay.
Which is both towns, but.
So it's a point of information.
It's a point of information for you guys, yes.
Did you have his hand?
Interesting, and, and maybe if somebody wanted to mediate between the two, it may go a long way, because my first thought was, uh, just do preventative maintenance, take, take the oldest one out. Put that on the shelf as a backup and put the new one in.
They're. They're both, but they can't get the money for it.
Right.
Cuz they're both new, and they wanna get a third new one, so when one of those fails. I mean, who knows if ten years down the road, you know, nothing's gonna happen for ten years, and then ten years down the road, that part fails, and now you're gonna buy a whole new system, cuz they don't even make that anymore.
So I think it may be good getting, getting them sitting at the table and should have a discussion, it's like, okay, we are, why are you saying no, why do you need it, and then just get them on the same page.
Well, they.
Because it may be something simple that, that they'd ask it, ask by the right way.
They did that.
I mean, bring in a lawyer, all the lawyer's gonna do is mediate, that's it, it's a waste of money.
According to him. Right. Yeah.
Yeah.
And the cost of that is, is twenty thousand for the part?
Not our board.
Mm-hmm.
Their board, they have their own.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, not, not to extend it further, too far, but with that being said, both of them are new right now, how long do they project those to last? And how long is this system supposed to last in the school, are we gonna be upgrading the system in the next ten years? And now you have something that's twenty grand on the shelf that you'll never use, nobody will ever use it because that system is out of date.
Right.
And you've now moved to onto a, so on the other side of it, they.
Yeah.
Having that on the shelf might be completely useless.
Right.
You're gonna grab them, I'll do it then.
I, I didn't ask that question.
You'd be five years away from upgrading the whole system.
Right. Right, exactly.
Alright.
I appreciate the time.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Okay.
Good change. Yeah.
Um, I think that's it, just trying to.
That's it.
Trying to stay above water with the planning and assessing stuff and, you know.
There was nothing going on with, um, the town garage, we haven't heard anything yet from the.
Getting the smoke. No.
Test pits and all that they did.
No. Haven't heard anything, I, it's funny, I was gonna email him today and I didn't get to it.
Do you have anything, Jason?
I don't believe I do.
Come on, you got something.
I did, but I used it up. That first agenda item.
So maybe, maybe the planning board.
You did a good job with it.
Maybe the planning board would like to, uh, have the select board at the, one of their meetings and discuss that.
No, I, yeah, and that, that's the end of that discussion is, we don't have authority to change any of this, it's the planning board who would change it.
Right. Right.
There's a whole lot of discussion in it around these regulations that need to take place. But not at this board, so. I won't, I won't use any more roundtable time.
We got plenty, Lou, did you have anything for roundtable?
I have a question, and I need some more, I'm asking for clarification. I noticed that, um, yeah, we've got the farmer's market here. How does that work? Meaning that, is, is the farmer's market renting the space of the, in the parking lot for, for, uh, its purposes?
Well, so it's the rec department that runs the farmer's market?
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the, the point person, um, is one lady like for that.
So, I. Okay.
But they run it through and each vendor pays a registration fee each week, like the setup, you know, like, don't know what the charge is, five or ten dollars or something like that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then that gets paid to the rec department.
Okay, how about the costs of, of, um, Littles Scotty's potty, potties?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, I mean, there's some that are going over to town hall, and I would imagine we've got one or two here at the farmer's market also.
Town hall.
I'm sorry, town, town field.
So, the way the porta potties work is that the rec department covers the porta potties that, four-inch program that they run. And it's like, the numbers vary depending on what the program is in the season. Um, some of the porta potties that are down at the fields now, at least last I knew and the way that it was, was like right now baseball is operating. Which baseball is a completely separate entity from our rec department. So baseball pays for those additional porta potties, um, for their season time, and then even during, uh, home run derby and chicken barbecue, they'll usually bring in a couple more. But that's all on them.
Okay.
Um.
How about the ones here for the farmer's market?
So that would be the rec department, I believe.
So it's coming out of the rec department, so it's not coming out of the monies that, um, that the, uh, rec department gets for, um, or from the farmer's market?
Well, that's, it's the same thing, so I said the rec department, I'd imagine, I don't know, cuz I haven't looked at it, but you could talk to Mindy. And find out if she takes the money from the farmer's market line or if she. And find out if she takes the money from the farmer's market line or if she uses.
Yeah, I did notice, you know, going through the the paperwork, that it did have a different account number. For the one from the farmer's market than the one from the town field.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah, so usually, yeah, it's like whatever sports are utilizing it, is how we do it, like break it down.
Okay.
Um, cause way back when, um, the porta potties were aligned on the general budget. And it was a fixed point, um, and you could only get so many porta potties. But then, at a point, um, it it was able to come in and argue with the select board about how there should be more flexibility. That if each sport wants to pay for their own porta potties or bring more porta potties in, we should be able to do that out of the revolving fund. And there's probably some minutes, um, you know, from five or six years ago, um, to state this. But to utilize that revolving fund money, cause we've taken registration fees, and that's a necessity for the people that are down there for those events or sports. Um, and that's why now there's more than two, there could be six or eight or ten down there, yeah.
Six or eight, yeah, there was like six or eight.
And I don't know if porta potties is even in the general budget anymore, I don't.
I don't think it is.
Yeah, so now it's wholly paid for through registration fees and not tax dollars.
Right.
Yeah. So all those are.
I was just asking for clarification on that, cause I noticed, as I said, when I was going through those records that just, that I couldn't understand why the two of them. Um, would have, would be a different set of bills rather than just, um, you know, regular porta potty.
Yeah. And even the one that was up at Center Cemetery.
But it does have. But it does have two different.
Yeah, was there for the fishing derby, um, but then we get the benefit of use when we do our memorial day observation the following Sunday, like that, Sunday after.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, you got it. And you can double check all that too with Mindy, but I think that's the way it's set up now, and still. So, I don't know, any other old new business?
Adjourn to non-public? Till non-public?
Um. Yeah.
Well, yeah, sometimes.
Should we adjourn or just take a pause till six thirty?
Yeah, and then go into non-public then, where actually you don't even have to go into non-public, it's a non-meeting.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, it's with attorneys.
Right.
Joe, do you have anything before we wrap up for tonight?
Nope, nothing.
All right. All right, uh, so thanks for watching everything, verbiage that came in, um, looks like we're going to adjourn until our. Um, legal consultation at six thirty. Um, so with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Oh, then you get to open.
What?
Then you get to open it again. To go into a non-me, or do you, do you have to go into a non-meeting? Cause it's non-public, non-public, you have to announce in a public meeting.
All right, I'll pause.
Cut out, pause, we're gonna pause.
Yeah, we'll just pause until.
Pause your quorum.
And then you'll never see us.
Yes.
But uh, thanks for watching. Have a good night.
Okay. Pause.
Six, damn, this is ridiculous. Supposed to be ten.